Chariot. Kung Yi. Shoulders forwards. Now backwards. Hands on your shoulders, forwards. Backwards. Arms forwards. Backwards. One forwards, one backwards. Change. Hands on your hips, circle your hips round. Change. Change again. Feet together, hands on your knees, circle your knees. Change. Change again. Lifting your knees. Round to the side. Inwards. Okay, shaking your legs off. Okay. You don't want to swap. You go first this time. Okay, so everybody got pads or something to punch? Okay. So punching first, we're gonna go left, left, right. So here we go, left, left, right. Okay? And then we duck. And then we go left, right, left, right. Okay, so it's left, left, right, duck, left, right, left, right. Now, if you're left-handed, instead you're gonna go right, right, left, duck, right, left, right, left. But if you're not left-handed, it's left, left, right, duck, left, right, left, right. Okay? And keep going, keep going. Are you ready? Fifty seconds. Go! And put the pads down in between. Okay, stop there. Swap the pads over. Round two, ready, same again. Left, left, right, duck, left, right, left, right. Lisa. Let's go! Stop there! Well done everyone, swap the pads over. Okay, now we're doing two, four or six punches. Now, the idea of this is that you punch as hard and as fast as you possibly can. Now, the pad person's gonna keep the pads by their side like this. And then they're gonna shout "two", and then back to the chest again. "Four", okay. "Two", "Six", "Four", "Two", whatever, okay? You can keep doing the same number or change the numbers, it's up to you, okay? But when they punch, they've gotta go fast and strong and hard. Okay? Fifty seconds, ready? Go! "Two", "Six". Sorry, my fault. "Four", Faster! "Two", "Two", "Four", "Six", "Six", Harder. "Two", "Four", "Four", "Two", "Six", "Six". Fifteen to go. "Two", "Two", Quicker. "Four", "Six", "Six", "Two", "Two". Okay, stop there! Good work guys, well done. Swap over. Ready, same again. Ready. Go! "Two", Faster, harder. "Four", "Four", "Two", 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 "Six", "Six". Faster, "Four", "Two", "Two", "Four", "Two", "Six", "Six", "Two", "Four". Ten seconds to go. "Four", "Two", "Four". Okay, stop there! Good work guys, grab a drink if you need a drink. Okay. Now, we're gonna kick, front leg turning kick, three times, okay? So, front leg is the leg that's forward. So you can put the kick, you can put the pad anywhere. So you can put it low, you can put it middle or high, and then switch. And you can go three times, go anywhere, and then switch each time. Okay? It's up to you where you put it, you don't have to put them all high or low. You can change them any size. But it's three on each leg, then swap over. Did that happen just now? Fraser? Did you just fall over and then the scab turned up? No? Okay. Is that because you didn't clean your bedroom? Ready? Ready? Ready guys? Let's go! One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. One. Two. Three. One. Two. Three. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Ten seconds to go. One. Two. Okay, stop there! Swap over, round two. Round two. Ready? Three kicks and then change legs. Let's go! One. Two. Sorry, wait for the pad to hit. Two. One. Two. Three. Two. Four. Five. Six. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Five seconds to go. One. Two. One. Two. Okay, stop there, stop there. Swap the pads over. Okay. Now, the tigers, you're going to do side kick this time. So pad holders for tigers. All you're doing is putting the pad out to the side, it's the side of your body. The face is facing the person. So imagine if they're kicking, like they can see the whole face of the pad, okay? Now, what I want you to do is to put the pad out like this. As soon as you put it out, they've got to kick and then you put it back. Put it out and then kick, put it out and kick. Okay, now they need to change legs each time. So they kick, turn, kick, turn, as soon as it appears, kick. Okay? Now, we're doing a similar thing for the taekwondo, except you're doing a reverse side kick. So you're gonna turn first and then kick. So just put it out to the side and only use one side, but you're gonna change legs each time. Okay? Ready, reverse side kick. Ready mum? Just go this way a little bit. Let's go! Change legs each time. That's good. Halfway! Okay, stop there! Well done, round two, round two. Ready, same again. Tigers side kick, taekwondo reverse side kick. Let's go! Hit the target! Ten left! Keep kicking guys, well done. Okay, stop there! There again, swap the pads over. Now, we're doing two turning kicks with a skip. Now, you hold the pads like this for two turning kicks with a skip. Now, try and hold them a little bit lower than you would do normally, okay? So for normal turning kicks, we might hold them up here, level with your partner's hips. But for two turning kicks with a skip, we're gonna hold them slightly lower. Okay? It's very difficult to kick them high and get the right rhythm if the pads are too high. Okay, so now with the tigers, they've got to do two kicks with a skip. So one leg takes off and then the other one takes off before the first one has landed. Okay? Now, for the taekwondo, you're gonna do two kicks, but then you're gonna do four kicks next time. So it's two first, then four. Two, then four. Keep taking the pads away. Two, take the pads away. Four. Two and four. Okay, are you ready? Fifty seconds, ready mum? Ready? Let's go! "Two", "Four", "Two", "Two", "Four", "Two", "Two", "Four", "Two", Halfway! "Two", "Four", "Two", "Four", "Two", "Four", "Two". Okay, stop there! Alright, good, well done guys, well done. Swap over. Two then four for the taekwondo. Now the tigers, just doing two each time. Are you ready? Ready, Lisa? Go! "Two", "Four", "Four", "Two", "Four". More like it. "Two", "Four", "Two", "Four", "Two", "Four", "Two", "Four", "Two". Stop there, stop there! Great work, well done guys, great work. Grab a drink if you need a drink. Okay. Now, tigers, you're going to do a double turning kick. So that means two kicks on the same side. So you go here, look, one, two. And then you try on the other leg, one, two. So you keep just swapping the pads over and it's double turning. Okay? So pad holders for double turning kick. Point the edges, edges of the pads straight at the person, okay? And then just swap over. Okay? Now, for everybody else, the taekwondo, you're gonna do a hook kick off the front leg. A hook kick, okay? Followed by a turning kick, okay? Now, don't put your foot down in between. So it's hook kick, turn and kick, don't put your foot down. You can hold two pads up like this or you can just have one and then change it to the other side for the second kick. Okay? Are you ready? Fifty seconds, ready mum? Let's go! I'll do that. Good. Fifteen left! Okay, stop there! Good work, well done. Swap over, round two. Round two. Ready? Lisa. Let's go! Hook kick, turn and kick. Ten left! Okay, stop there! Swap the pads over. Okay. Now, tigers are gonna step forwards three times, three turning kicks. So you may need to cover the distance here. So we're gonna kick one, two, and then three. The third one, try and make it a bit higher than the others. Now, if you can't move, just get them to kick one, two, three. Okay? If you're on your knees or you're stationary, just one, two, three. If you can move, obviously get them to step forwards with the kick, okay? And just put the third one a bit higher. Okay? Now, taekwondo, we're gonna do a turning kick followed by a reverse turning kick. So we go turning kick off the back leg, followed by reverse turning kick. And then change legs each time. So we go turning kick, reverse turning kick. So with the taekwondo, the turning kick and the reverse turning kick, the pads are on the same side. Okay? Obviously just change the end. Change after each leg. Okay, ready? Let's go! Hit the target! Okay? Get dizzy? This needs lesson. Okay, stop there! Swap pads over. Ready, round two, same again, fifty sec. Let's go! Let me go. Twenty seconds to go. Five. Okay, stop there! Great effort, good work, well done, well done. Swap the pads over. Last one now, last one. Grab a drink. Okay, now, tigers, you're going to do double side kicks. We did side kicks earlier, okay? Now, when you do a double side kick, only the last kick, the double, the second kick, only the second kick hits the pad. So it's like this. So you lift your knee up and then two kicks. The first one kicks close to the pad and then the second one actually kicks the pad. Watch again. That's it, good. Okay, so the first one kicks close, the second one actually kicks the pad. Now, change legs each time. Taekwondo people, you're gonna chase the pad around the room. Okay, so watch. You're gonna kick the pad as much as you can and the pad person's gonna move. You're gonna follow it and keep kicking it, okay? At halfway stage, I'm gonna say change and you're gonna change legs. Change legs. And you're gonna chase the pad with the other side kick. Okay? Now, don't worry if you haven't got much room, just go forwards and then slightly turn a little bit. Okay, you don't have to move far to make it difficult. Okay? Are you ready? Ready mum? Okay, fifty seconds, chase the side kick. Double side kick for the tigers. Ready? Let's go! Keep going, that's good. I'll tell you when it's halfway to change legs. Keep going, keep kicking the pad. If they're struggling to kick it, just hold the pad a little bit lower. Keep going, keep going. Change legs! Change to the other leg. Go, 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 start kicking, follow the pad. Kick with the edge of your foot. Build up the strength in that hip. Keep going, keep kicking. That's good. Five seconds left. Okay, stop there! Well done, great kicking guys, well done. Very good. Swap the pads over, round two, this is the last one, last one we're doing. Go! That's it, good, keep going, that's it. Okay, if you find you're too close, it's up to you to step back. That's it, if you're too close, get a step back a bit. Keep going, same leg. Change legs! Don't get too close or else you're gonna have to go back. Keep kicking, keep kicking, keep that leg up. Fifteen to go! Come on! Keep kicking! Side kick, side kick, side kick! The curse of the left leg. Keep going, keep going! Okay, stop there, stop there! Well done guys, that was a difficult, a difficult exercise. So well done if you managed to do that. Very good, good effort. Okay, thanks pad holders. Everybody face the pad holder please. Chariot. Kung Yi. Thanks pad holders, you were awesome, very good. Everybody legs out wide. Woo! Oh yeah, I don't stretch, because I didn't do any kicking. Bit wider! Nice wide stretch, stretch out those legs. Well done, bit lower, bit lower. Very good. Keep going, don't give up on the stretch. Okay, gently lower yourself to the ground. Bring your feet in, push your knees out to the side, shake your legs up and down. So your, uh, your level of fitness is measured in how long it takes you to get up. Uh, if you, uh, if you get up really slowly, uh, like more than a week, then you're pretty unfit. If you get up the, in the same day, you're pretty fit. Okay, okay, stand up! You're all super fit, well done, well done. Shake your legs off. Thanks for logging on today guys, well done everyone, Charrette? Kyeong Yee? Awesome, well done.